This time I would like to ask Councilman Joiner if he would please lead us in a moment of prayer. If you will stand for that.
Almighty God, as we enter the season of Thanksgiving celebration, we pray for renewal and strength for our journey. We pray for wisdom and knowledge as a city council team to lead our city. We pray for the consistency of all of our people as we work together for the good of all of us. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
This time I'd like to ask City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Knight, Blackwell.
Here.
Joiner.
Here.
TJ Walker.
Here.
Daughtry.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Javaris Walker.
Here.
Okay, we have a call in present. At this time, I'd like to receive a motion to approve the minutes of the consideration of the minutes for the regular scheduled city council meeting, which was held September 22nd of 2025.
So.
Motion made by Councilman Harris, seconded by Councilman Joiner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, this time I'd like consideration of additions or deletions to our agenda. I do have one addition, which is the ordinance to amending the chapter 16 of our code, ordinance code. Is there any other additions or deletions that we need to consider tonight? I'll make that item 10, hearing none. I need a motion though to amend the agenda. Motion made by Councilman Joiner, is there a second? Second made by Councilman Blackwell. Any need for discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. So at this point, it's one of the great privileges and honor that I get is to make a proclamation. And so to celebrate the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, I'd like to say that whereas on December 19th of 1925, Anna Easter Brown, one of the original founders of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, organized the Chi Omega Chapter in Rocky Mount, North Carolina, which will celebrate its 100th birthday anniversary on December 19th of 2025. And whereas throughout Chi Omega's chapter's 100 year history, it is here to five basic tenets of the sorority. To cultivate and encourage high scholastic and ethical standards, promote unity and friendship among college women, study and help alleviate problems concerning girls and women in order to improve their social stature, maintain a progressive interest in college life and to be of service to all mankind. And whereas Rocky Mount's Chi Omega Chapter looks for opportunities to provide community services and signature programs serving the residents of Rocky Mount, North Carolina. And whereas today, the Chi Omega Chapter is proud to have a membership of 175 diverse, talented and dedicated college educated women working together and advocating for the young women of Rocky Mount, North Carolina. Now therefore, I as the mayor of the city of Rocky Mount do hereby proclaim December 19th, 2025 as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Rocky Mount Chi Omega Chapter Day in the city of Rocky Mount. Thank you. Please talk.
Need a team photo.
Y'all had to step forward, one more step.
Okay, this time I will turn the meeting over and recognize our city manager, Elton Daniels. Give us a community update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening, everyone. As we move into mid-November holiday season, I'd like to share a few key updates and community events. First, a reminder that tomorrow, Tuesday, November 11th, the city will observe Veterans Day. City offices will be closed and the Tar River Transit will not operate tomorrow. However, garbage collection will continue its normal schedule. We encourage everyone to take a moment to honor the men and women who have served our country. For those of you who are in the audience tonight, thank you for your service. Looking ahead, the Jingle Mingle Artesian Market will take place Saturday, November 15th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Imperial Center. The event will feature local artists, handmade crafts and holiday decor, a perfect way to support local creators and begin the holiday shopping season. Then, on Friday, November 21st, the Rocky Mount Event Center will host Jingle and Jazz, featuring a special performance by the John Brown Big Band with Nina Freelon. The evening begins at 6:30 p.m. and offers smooth jazz, great food and a festive downtown atmosphere. As we approach Thanksgiving, please note that city offices and facilities will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th in observance of the holiday. The Tar River Transit will not operate during that time and resume service on Monday, December 1st. Residential garbage collection will shift forward one day. Thursday routes will move to Friday and Friday routes will move to Saturday. We continue the holiday season into December with the Rocky Mount Christmas Parade on Sunday, December 7th from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. in downtown Rocky Mount. The parade is presented by Cummins Rock Rocky Mount Engine Plant and Station Square will host a food truck rodeo following the parade. It's always a highlight for families and visitors as we celebrate community spirit and the start of the Christmas season. Last but not least, I'd like to congratulate our Water Research Resources Director, Brenton Bent, who just completed UNC's Leading for Results Program as a Civic Fellow. He's looking at me because he's surprised. Brenton was one of only 24 leaders selected statewide for more than 150 applicants. This program was tuition free thanks to Civic Federal Credit Union. It focuses on practical leadership tools and strategy, helping participants strengthen their personal leadership and organizational impact. So Brenton, I look forward to you showing what you learned in the class and implement it here in Rocky Mount. Congratulations again. And last but not least, I want to kind of talk about some of the things that the city has experienced over the last few weeks with regard to our financial situation. Our city has faced a series of difficult but necessary decisions in response to the financial challenges brought on by our current economic situation. As your city manager, I want to speak directly to you. Our residents, city employees, business community, and the community partners to express both my empathy and my deep respect for the way our city has come together during this time. I fully recognize that the recent decisions have not been easy for anyone. They have impacted our workforce, our operations, and in some cases, the services that our community relies on. Change of this nature often brings uncertainty, frustration and disappointment. Please know that these choices were not made without great deal of thought. Every step was carefully considered, guided by our responsibility to safeguard the long-term health and stability of Rocky Mount finances while still upholding our commitment to serve our citizens with excellence. Our city, like many others across the country, has faced mounting financial pressures. Economic fluctuations, rising costs and shifting revenue have created a situation that requires to act decisively. The decisions we have made are a part of a broader effort to put Rocky Mount on a more sustainable path, one that ensures we continue to provide essential services, invest in our infrastructure and support the programs that enhance the quality of life for all Rocky Mount residents. I want to take a moment to thank our dedicated city employees who continue to serve this community with professionalism, compassion and integrity, even as they adapt to the changes that we're currently going through. Their resilience and commitment are at the heart of what makes our city government work. Also want to thank the residents and the community leaders for your patience, your understanding and willingness to engage in honest dialogue about where we are, but more importantly, where we're headed. While these times are challenging, I am generally hopeful about what lies ahead. We're taking meaningful steps to improve efficiency, modernize operations and strengthen our financial management practices. We are using this moment to evaluate what we do well, identify where we can improve and focus our resources where they will have the greatest impact. This is a reset for Rocky Mount. These actions will position us for a stronger, more resilient future. Rocky Mount has always been a city defined by its perseverance and its people. We have weathered challenges before and each time, every single time, we've come out stronger, wiser and more united. I, as your new city manager, have no doubt that this chapter will be no different. Together, we can assure that the decisions we make today lead to a brighter, more stable tomorrow for everyone who calls Rocky Mount home. I'm proud to be in Rocky Mount. I'm proud to call Rocky Mount home. Thank you for your continued trust, your understanding and your commitment to this great community. I remain confident through collaboration, transparency and a shared purpose, we together will build Rocky Mount that is not only financial sound, but also even more vibrant and full of opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I couldn't agree with you more. And we are excited about the work you're doing, your team, the team that you've built and what you're moving forward with and remained here to support you. Does anybody have any comments or questions to the manager entries report? Thank you. All right, this time that brings us to petitions to be received from the public. This is an opportunity for public comments and we thank you for coming to the city council meeting tonight to share your views. We value all citizen input. Speaker comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes during the public comment period. And at the conclusion of three minutes, each speaker shall leave the podium. Comments must be directed to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in your comments, speakers should not expect any comments, actions or deliberation from the board on any issue raised during the public comment period. At the board's discretion, it may refer issues to the appropriate city officials or staff for further investigation. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments, which shall be again limited to a maximum of three minutes. This time I'd like to invite Richard Worsington to the podium.
Evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff. How embarrassing, allowing the general fund balance to be depleted from 120 million to 20 million in only a few short years and second in depth, a second in-depth audit by the state auditor. I am here tonight to set the record straight on two electric utility related items. First, the last electric rate increase was effective July 1st, 2025. The motion for the July 1 electric rate increase was made by the same council member who incorrectly stated there had not been an increase since 2017. After being corrected about that last rate increase date, that same council member stated, "It looked like we don't know what we're talking about." Second is regarding the comments about the 2011 merger of the Duke and Progress Energy and the claim that Rocky Mountain New Bern sued to get lower rates. What Rocky Mountain New Bern actually did was intervene in the merger before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission or FERC on the basis that the merger would create unfair competition. City council ignored my recommendation to support the merger and instead spent over $350,000 fighting the merger. Although FERC allowed the merger to proceed, it did rule in Rocky Mountain New Bern's favor, agreeing that the merger could create unfair competition. To address this potential for unfair competition, the FERC ordered Duke to improve their electric transmission system, providing access to additional sources of power. However, this ruling did not benefit Rocky Mount since Rocky Mount is contractually obligated to purchase all of its wholesale power from Duke, not from any other source. The FERC order certainly did not lower Rocky Mount's rates. The FERC order did benefit other eastern North Carolina electric utilities such as COOPS by providing them with access to potentially lower cost power. These other utilities are Rocky Mount's competitors for economic developments projects. And this order provided our competitors with the potential access to lower cost power. It was the merger that city council spent $350,000 fighting that ultimately allowed Duke to purchase the generating assets in 2015. It was the merger that city council fought that resulted in the 20% decrease in power costs in Rocky Mount's now competitive electric rates. It was the merger that city council fought that ultimately fixed Rocky Mount's high electric rates. I'll finish by repeating the earlier quote. "It looked like we don't know what we're talking about." Go birds.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Ms. Mari Menjes to the podium.
Sitting at the back, so I don't start my three minutes earlier. First of all, since our city council members are the leaders, is somehow can't find, what, 120, 80 million? That's kind of scary. I thought that our city council, which our previous city council, y'all thought lost some money since most of y'all were the previous administration. I have a great idea. I suggest, since most of you on the city council are leaders and businessmen that have made lots of money or enough money that you don't have to worry that your utilities are going to go up. I suggest for the next, since y'all said in the next 10 months, everybody else that's on fixed incomes or just regular, normal people gonna have our stuff raised. Y'all in a show of coming together, don't take a paycheck. Put your salaries back into the kitty to kind of help clear up some of those millions of dollars that are there. I'm sure y'all don't need that paycheck to pay your bills because some of these people that are on really fixed incomes that just had that much extra money, that extra money is going to be gone because somehow we lost millions of dollars. I hadn't figured it out yet. And I saw on the news the other day that y'all had to sign a state document saying that y'all were aware of shortages for the past couple of years. Well, if you knew you don't have any money, why do you kept spending them? I don't understand that. And there was one person said they don't even remember signing that document. What? And also, we were, I read in the paper that y'all didn't really want to say anything to the new audit came out. Well, the last audit we had, I don't think y'all did much with that. I mean, the state said it was one of y'all's leaders hadn't paid $47,000 in utilities because the then, which is not, I don't know which one it was, city manager told him that they didn't have to do it. Now, do you really think he's still paying his utilities he hadn't paid before? Are y'all going to pay attention to this audit coming up? I really hope you do. Let's see, what else? I don't believe I have extra time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please don't litter. And thank y'all for.
Thank you.
Getting ready.
So it brings us to item number eight, which is our consent agenda. This time I'll receive a motion to approve the consent agenda inclusive of approval of the street closure. Authorize state to submit application on behalf of the city. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any required documentation and/or certifications and subsequent grant agreement on behalf of the city and adopt resolution and authorize the mayor to execute agreement on behalf of the city. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joiner, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item number nine is consideration of revised award for one automated leaf truck and two leaf and debris loaders in the amount of $446,664.96 to Infrastructure Solutions Group. On January 13th, 2025, the council approved an award to Carolina Industrial Equipment in the amount of $452,360.38. And after council's action, the manufacturer informed the city that Carolina Industrial Equipment is no longer an authorized dealer for this line in the state of North Carolina. This revision will change the vendor for BD-2025-5 and BD-2025-6 from Carolina Industrial Equipment to Infrastructure Solutions Group. I'm seeking a motion, we're seeking a motion to award the revised bid as recommended and to authorize the purchasing division to issue purchase orders and execute bid documents in accordance with the council's award. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joiner, is there a second? Second made by Councilman Blackwell, is there a need for discussion? Yes, sir, Councilman TJ Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe after our last meeting, I was absent, but we did receive some questions around our purchases since we've had the financial crisis. And Mr. Manager, do you have anyone that could just speak to this agenda item and the significance of this purchase and what this ratification is in regards to the new vendor?
Well, what I will say is that this particular purchase was something that had already been purchased like in early January. This isn't any new money, this is actually financing that had already been approved, but the vendor had changed. So that's the only, that's the only difference. And I would say the significance of this, this equipment is the equivalent of about five employees that one person can do the job now that five employees could do. So it's going to help us be more efficient. And we do have our public works director in the building if you have any other specific technical questions.
No, sir, thank you. I think that justifies what we were asked to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. That brings us to item 10 that we added to the agenda, which is an ordinance amending chapter 16 of the code of the city of Rocky Mount entitled Personnel Plan of the City of Rocky Mount. And be it ordained by the city council of the city of Rocky Mount, section one, that chapter 16 of the code of the city of Rocky Mount entitled Personnel Division Three Pay Plan as amended be further amended by deleting section 16.87 dot longevity pay. And section two, all ordinances or clauses or ordinances and administrative personnel policies or clauses of administrative personnel policies in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall be effective from and after its adoption. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joiner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, who was that? Tom Harris. All right, is there a need for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could we have the manager provide some information or?
Sure. Mr. Manager, if you had the floor, if you could give us some background, that might be helpful.
Yes, a little bit of background. So the current longevity as it stands now, on an annual basis, costs the city about $1.2 million. As a cost segment measure, staff is evaluating other ways that we can continue to provide longevity to employees, but just at a rate that would not exceed budgetary limits. So right now, even though this is up for discussion and a vote for removing the policy as it stands, my goal is presenting something within the next couple of days to council to vote on, possibly at the next meeting or administrative policy that will allow me and my staff to implement longevity in a new format to give the people before Christmas.
Any other discussion or questions? Cliff King? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. All right. Motion carries, that was a super majority, it did require five of seven, we did get five. With that said, anybody have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I now adjourn the regular scheduled meeting of Rocky Mount City Council.